All righty, council members, I don't believe we've had any additions.
Mr. --
Yes, sir.
Please be sure to introduce the staff tonight.
You know, I just assume everybody knows them, because I do. But you're right, thank you, Mr. Franklin. For those of you who can see them, and I think maybe we can adjust the camera that goes over here. Can we do that now? We can actually have the toggle and move the camera over here and show those folks? Yes? No? Maybe?
One from the back.
There we go, all righty. Immediately to be my left and on the TV screen, your right, our town -- new town manager, his first town council meeting, James Ayers; our town attorney, Hugh, you just met, for our wonderful, thankful blessing, Bo Hauf. Now, do I pause while you come back over to this side? We're gonna have to get used to -- somebody's gonna have to direct us. Our town clerk, Dora Moore, and our town finance director, Ms. Pam Worrell. We'll introduce our sergeant for our community policing here in just a minute when he does his presentation. Thank you, Mr. Franklin. Oh, and in the back, hiding and learning about the TV station tonight is our planning director, Stacy Paulbert. Very good. They've spread out all over me tonight, so just, council, keep me directed, point me in the right direction, tell me what I've forgotten. Council members, I believe we haven't had any additions to our agenda for this evening, so if not, we'll entertain a motion to accept it.
Motion.
As Mr. Foster makes the motion, Mr. Smitherman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is our agenda. Mr. Manager, the consent agenda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight on the consent agenda, we have three items. The first one is Resolution 2022-058. These would be the financial statements for the three months ended September 2022. Also, Item B on the consent agenda, that's the approval of the agenda briefing minutes for the October 6, 2022, meeting. And Item 2C, that's approval of regular meeting minutes, that's October 13, 2022. And these are for your consideration on the consent agenda.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that generally become before the council. They're routine in nature like our meetings and our financial reports. You can rest assured that prior to coming here, council members pore over these with fine detail, so that they are familiar with them. But generally, we take them all as a group and not discuss them individually. However, any council member may ask for anyone to be pulled off individually to be discussed. There are no individual items. We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, please.
Motion.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion, Ms. Foster makes this -- Ms. Welch makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous, thank you. PJ, Sergeant Stringer.
First of all, I want to say thank you for another opportunity to serve in the town of Lewisville. I want to say thank you to our veterans as we get ready to celebrate Veterans Day, so what they do for our country, the sacrifices that they make, and their families make as well. So I think they should be recognized. I hope everybody has a long, extended weekend, and thank you to the veterans. You can see that our calls for this -- for month of October were 775. Total calls for service, 494. Security checks, 24 traffic violations, alarms were at 17, and then our response time around four minutes. So compared to 645 last year at this time, 313, 97, and 16 alarms this time last year. Nothing really significant that stands out. A couple of things that I did want to mention with the getting nighttime a little sooner. As you know, we're about to enter into the peak of delivery season, so since COVID, as we know, online shopping is probably at an all-time high. So there is a lot of UPS drivers, Amazon, various delivery drivers. So just be mindful that these folks are working long, extended hours. It's nighttime, so a couple of things, leave a light on for them. Set your lights, your pathway lights, let them drop off those packages. The more lights that you can see on your porches for packages, some people may say, well, they can see that I have a package, but with Ring doorbell cameras and stuff like that, that lights it up. So just be mindful that these folks are gonna be in the neighborhoods and watch for them stepping out in the traffic and stuff, just kind of slow down. Anyway, I hope everybody has a good weekend, and if nobody has any questions, I'll let you continue on with your meeting.
Anything for PJ. PJ, thank you so much.
All right.
Always good to see you.
Yes, sir.
And as they say, be careful out there. All righty. Pam, you have a guest and a presentation for us this evening.
Okay, so we did submit our audited financial statements to the Local Government Commission on October 31, and they were subsequently approved on November 4. The LGC has imposed some additional requirements on units of local government as it relates to their annual audit. The LGC is very concerned that some governing boards of some local governments are not receiving the results of their audits in a timely manner, and sometimes not at all. Their concern is especially great for those units suffering financially, as well as those that have material matters of noncompliance, as well as internal control weaknesses. So in an effort to improve transparency, the LGC now requires the following. Now all audit results must be presented to the governing board by the audit firm in a live meeting of the governing board. This presentation must be made within 45 days of the date that the audit is submitted to the Local Government Commission. If there are any internal control weaknesses or matters of noncompliance, they must be presented to the governing board at this meeting. In addition, if there are any financial performance indicators of concern, they must also be presented by the auditor to the governing board at this meeting. So to that end, tonight we have with us Monty Pendry. He's a partner with our audit firm of Gibson &amp; Company, and together we put together a presentation for the town council that will satisfy all of the reporting requirements imposed by the Local Government Commission. So Monty will begin by reporting on the results of the audit procedures and the audit report, and then I'll pick up and report on the numbers and the financial results for the year.
Good evening.
Welcome, Monty.
Hello.
Good to see you.
Again, my name is Monty Pendry, and I am with Gibson &amp; Company, and I am the one who performed the audit for the current year. And tonight, I just, like Pam said, I just want to give you a very brief overview of the results of our audit and talk a little bit more about what's in our audit opinion. And like Pam said, she's gonna talk more about the actual numbers in the report. But the auditor's opinion is actually found on pages 1 through 3 of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It states that management of the town of Lewisville is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. And this does include the design, the implementation, and maintenance of your internal controls relevant to the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement, and whether that's due to fraud or error. It also states that it is the auditor's responsibility to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. The audit is conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States and the standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. Those standards require that the audit is planned and performed to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Also, in our audit opinion, it sort of goes in and tells you what we sort of do in an audit, but we -- an audit involves performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. It also includes evaluating the appropriateness of accounting policies used and the reasonableness of significant estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall presentation of the financial statements. And the most important paragraph in our auditor's report is the opinion paragraph. And in that paragraph, it says that the opinion -- in the opinion of Gibson &amp; Company, based on our audit, the financial statements present fairly, in all material respects, the financial position of the town of Lewisville for the year end of June 30, 2022. And this is what we call an unmodified audit opinion, or a clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can issue. Since the town did receive the, what we call the ARPA money, the coronavirus state and local recovery funds this year, the U.S. Treasury and the Office of Management and Budget wanted most of the towns to perform what we call a special examination of those funds to check for the compliance with those funds. And we did perform what we call an alternative coronavirus state and local physical recovery funds compliance examination. And as specified by the U.S. Treasury, we examined the town's compliance with two specific compliance requirements. Number one being the activities allowed or unallowed, and two, allowable cost and cost principles. The town used $1,208,168 of its ARPA funding to reimburse the general fund for salaries and benefits for the period April 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. And in that examination report, it states that, in our opinion, the town of Lewisville complied in all material respects with the two specified requirements that are listed there above. So everything was good there also. When actually coming in and performing the audit, all the bank accounts were properly reconciled, all the balance sheet accounts were properly reconciled, the accounting records were neat and in good order, we did not have to make any adjusting journal entries, we found no internal control deficiencies, or no matters of noncompliance. There were no budget violations in the general fund or any of your other governmental funds. And like Pam had said before, if there were any performance indicators that the LGC wanted us to tell you about, we would have to tell them at this meeting, and we found no performance indicators also. And at this time, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Pam, and she's gonna tell you about all the good numbers.
Thank you, Monty. Okay, probably the most important number of all, and one that draws the most attention, is the fund balance in the general fund. The general fund, of course, is the main operating fund of the town. At June 30, 2022, the town had a general fund balance of $7,943,134. The general fund did increase during the fiscal year by $1,775,270. This increase is primarily due to the transfer that we made from the American Rescue Plan Fund to the general fund in the amount of $1,208,168. In accordance with ARPA guidelines, these funds were categorized as revenue replacement and used to reimburse the general fund for general government services, specifically salaries and benefits for the period April 2021 through June 2022. The large increase in our fund balance can also be attributed to certain revenue sources that came in significantly better than anticipated. For instance, sales tax revenue came in significantly over budget during the fiscal year. We collected $1,078,665 in sales tax revenue, which represents a 16.7% increase over the prior year. We had very conservatively only budgeted $896,530. So sales tax revenue came in approximately $182,000 over budget during the fiscal year. In addition, the profit distribution from the ABC Board came in significantly over budget. We collected $233,274 in ABC revenue, which represented a 3.7% increase over the prior year. We had only budgeted $190,000, so that revenue source came in $43,000 over budget. And then lastly, our Pell Bill revenue also came in significantly better than expected. We collected $389,472 in Pell Bill revenue, where we had only budgeted revenue of $316,750. So Pell Bill revenue came in approximately $73,000 over budget. If you'll recall, the state did not pass their budget until November of 2021, but we had to prepare our budget in the spring of 2021. So we had to base our estimate for Pell Bill revenue on prior year allocations, but when the state finally did pass their budget, they allocated significantly more of Pell Bill revenue to municipalities. So that's why we had that large amount over budget. Now, another factor that probably added to the growth in our fund balance was also that the annual transfer that we normally make from the general fund to the municipal buildings and land capital reserve of $170,000 was suspended during that year. So that also probably contributed to the increase in our fund balance. Now, it's very difficult to look at a single number, such as general fund balance, and tell if our town finances are really healthy. So what you have to do instead is to look at that number and how it relates to other numbers in the financial statements. So to that end, the Local Government Commission provides a calculation that they like to see, and they use it to help measure the financial health of units of local governments. The calculation is a ratio, and it is the general fund balance available for appropriation as a percentage of general fund expenditures. For those of you that are interested in the math behind the calculation, as of the end of each fiscal year, you take your cash and investments and subtract any accounts payable and other accrued expenses. This gives you your fund balance available for appropriation. You then divide this number by the general fund expenditures for the year, as well as any transfers out of the general fund for the year. So at June 30, 2022, the town of Lewisville had a general fund balance available for appropriation of $7,457,553. This amount, as a percentage of general fund expenditures and transfers, calculates to If you'll recall, the town council in years past approved a fund balance policy, and it states that the town will not allow the available fund balance percentage to drop below 65%. So we are well within the requirements of our own town policy. How do we interpret this percentage? Oh, could you back up? Thank you, Dora. We can interpret this percentage to mean that as at June 30, 2022, we had enough cash on hand to cover approximately 18 months' worth of operating expenses, so this is a very healthy fund balance. By this standard, our general fund balance is healthy. With this reserve, we're able to meet all of our obligations as they become due, regardless of the timing of when our revenues come in. It also provides us a cushion in the event the town is faced with an emergency. And lastly, it also provides the town the financing it needs for future capital improvements, like the multiple transportation projects that we have on the table right now, and also for the parks and recreation improvements that we have planned. Thank you, Dora. On this slide, I presented the history of our available general fund balance and the percentage of it to general fund expenditure, so you can see how it's fluctuated through the years. Our percentage has always been well above 100%, with a high of 158.27 at June 30, 2020. The decline in our percentage to 97.86% at June 30, 2021 was anticipated when council approved the use of excess fund balance to finance the new community center, and they also used excess fund balance to pay off early the installment loan on the Town Hall Building. But as you can see, this year, our fund balance rebounded quite nicely to 155.02. I was curious to see if we had not had the ARPA money, how much that -- how much our percentage would have increased to? And I removed the ARPA money, and if we had not had the ARPA money, our percentage would have still been 130%. So that speaks well for the town. Okay, are there any other questions about the general fund before I move on to the rest of the funds?
Very quickly, what does the Local Government Commission require a town to maintain?
They don't require a specific number. It's more a matter of they become alarmed if they see it drop below a certain percentage. If they see it drop below 8%, that's alarming to them, but it's not that they require that percentage.
Okay, but 8%?
Yeah.
That's for the alarm, and we're at 100.
And that's only one month's worth of operating expenses, so.
That's right, that's what I'm saying. We're at 100-plus percent, that's great.
About 18 months.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pam, when we -- we'll take ARPA again in this budget season, correct? So we'll have to do this, when you mentioned Monty doing like a special something, we're gonna have to do that same thing for 2023. Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Well, let me qualify that. It depends on, too, the combination of that money with our other federal funding. If our other federal funding reaches a certain level, then that ARPA money rises to another level with it, and will require additional audit procedures. Okay, thank you. Yeah, but at a minimum, we will have that testing done. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Pam, if I might? One thing I would ask for you to clarify, and it's for, I think, everyone listening as well, the Pell Bill, where does the Pell Bill money come from?
The Pell Bill money is actually an appropriation of the North Carolina General Assembly, and it's allocated to municipalities partly based on the number of street miles that they have, and also based on their population.
Did it not in the past come from gas taxes?
It did, but for many years now, it has not been based on the gas tax. It's strictly an appropriation from the General Assembly. So whatever dollar amount the General Assembly wants to contribute to the Pell Bill pot of money to distribute, it comes from their budget. Any other questions?
I do have a question. Thank you.
Move forward, turn your microphone. Pull it down a little bit more, there we go.
I've got a question. When I look at the general fund balance increase, and then subtract the ARPA money from that, the number I get is 567,102. And then when I look at the -- where the balance of that difference comes from, from the numbers that are in the report, it looks like 468,131. So are there some other monies out there that represent that difference?
Yeah. Dora, would you flip back to the -- a few slides, and keep going to the next slide? Okay. On this slide right here, where I talked about where the fund balance increased 1.7, primarily attributable to the ARPA money.
Right.
But then I also mentioned that it was also attributable to certain revenue items that came in significantly over budget.
Right.
So sales tax revenue coming in $182,000 over budget, that's
Right.
partially the reason for the increase. And then, Dora, if you'll flip one more slide, also the ABC Board revenue and the Pell Bill money coming in significantly over budget, that also contributed to the increase in our fund balance.
Yeah, when I add all those numbers together, it came up to 468,131.
And then add in $170,000 of the transfer to the
Yeah, it comes to
reserve we normally make.
Right, it comes to 468,131
Okay.
Compared to 567.
And then, just generally, certain line items under the expenditure categories would come in under budget as well, so.
Okay. So it's not all revenue-based?
Not all revenue-based.
Some of it is savings-based?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. Dora, if we could go back to the MSD page. Okay, now let's talk about the Willow Run Municipal Service District Special Revenue Fund. The MSD had total revenue this year of $37,782, which did include property tax revenue of Expenses totaled $39,177. Expenses were up this year because of two factors. One, we did engage an engineering firm to complete an emergency action plan for the Falmouth Dam. And secondly, we did contract with a company to remove trees from the lakes this year. So those were two large projects that took a chunk out of the revenues. So this year, the fund balance in the MSD did decrease by $1,395, and at the end of the year, the fund balance in that fund was $192,445. Okay. On the next slide, we talk about our capital reserve funds. This slide shows the activity in the capital reserves. For each reserve, you'll see the beginning balance, any investment earnings, any transfers into the funds, and any transfers out of the funds, and then the balance of each capital reserve at June 30. The first reserve is the Great Wagon Road Construction Capital Reserve. The annual budgeted transfer from the general fund was made in that fiscal year of $115,000, and so it did end the year with a balance of $1,051,084. The next reserve is the Sidewalks, Bike Paths, and Greenways Capital Reserve. It did receive its annual transfer from the general fund of $25,000. And a transfer was also made out of that reserve this year to the Gateway Capital Project in the amount of $16,114. So at the end of the year, the capital reserve had a balance of $132,270. Then the next reserve is the Municipal Buildings and Land Capital Reserve. As I mentioned earlier, the annual budgeted transfer from the general fund was suspended during the budget year, so there were no transfers into this reserve during the fiscal year. However, there was a transfer out to the Community Center Capital Project in the amount of $40,000. So at the end of the year, this particular reserve had a balance of $130,370. And lastly, we have the newly created Public Works Facility Capital Reserve. It did receive its annual transfer of $95,000, and thus ended the year with a balance of So at the end of the fiscal year, all of our capital reserves added together came to All right, next slide, please. All right, this slide focuses on our capital projects and the fund balance of each one at the end of the fiscal year. The first is the Great Wagon Road Capital Project Fund. It had no activity this year. At the end of the year, it did have a fund balance of $735,968. Our next capital project is the Jack Warren Park Maintenance Facility/Playground Expansion Capital Project. It also had no activity during the year, but did end with $20,661. The next project, which is the Gateway Project, was an active project during the year with design and right-of-way purchase. It ended the year with a fund balance of $191,785. The next capital project is the Community Center Capital Project, which, of course, was very active during the year. At June 30, it still had a fund balance of $274,674. And then lastly, is the Roundabout at Lewis Wilvina Road and Robin Hood Road Capital Project. The project was in the design phase during the fiscal year, and at the end of the year carried a fund balance of $217,066. And lastly, our last slide focuses on the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. This is a special revenue fund. During the year, we did receive the first installment from the federal government of As mentioned earlier, we did transfer $1,208,168 from the ARPA fund to the general fund to reimburse the general fund for salaries and benefits from April 21 through June 2022. So the cash balance in the ARPA fund at June 30 was $805,470. I'll go on to say that the second installment of the ARPA funding was received subsequent to year-end in July 2022 in the amount of $212,236, to bring us up to our total funding from the federal government of $4,24,472.
So the fund balance in this account would be dramatically higher than what it was at June 30 that's indicated in these figures.
Yeah, it would be $2 million, about 2.8 million right now. Yeah. That concludes our comments tonight. Are there any questions?
Two comments. One is on the ARPA funding. Can you -- I guess it's a question. Can you remind us of when it has to be expended?
Yes, the money has to be encumbered or committed by December 31, 2024, and has to be fully spent by December 31, 2026.
Okay. And then, back to my earlier question, it would be helpful to me And, and, and then back to my earlier question, it, it would be helpful to me as part of the, at least for air, understanding and clarity, just to have a statement that would demonstrate the variance between the amount that was shown of, uh, where the excess revenues came from. Yeah, I mean, you mentioned that it's through savings and other line items where, I, I guess that means where we budgeted one amount and it, and we didn't, we didn't spend it all, basically. And so we had money left over from those, uh, from those line items as well. And so, I, I mean, I just think, cause someone else out who is like me is, is an amateur accountant, you know, might look at this, do the numbers like I did and said, well, there's a hundred thousand dollars missing somewhere. Or appears not missing, missing, but it is not accounted for in, in the report. And so it would just be helpful to me, uh, to have a statement like that that would say that any other differences that are apparent are the result of what you said.
All right. And if it helps, everybody has a copy of the report in front of them. If you'll turn to page 46, in the back of the report. Okay, this is a four-page schedule and it's a detailed schedule of all the activity in the general fund for the year. It starts with revenues. The first page is pretty much entirely revenues, but at the bottom of page 46, it does begin with the expenditures. And it, uh, details each department in the general fund and then subcategories under the general fund. And you can see, it's also a comparison schedule between budget and actual. So you see budget in the first column, actual in the second, and then in the third column, you see a variance, uh, whether it's positive or negative. So that does help you to narrow down, um, somewhat within the departments and see the, the budget variances. I might also mention too, that the, um, the financial statements have already been posted to the website. So if anyone, um, at home wants to go onto the town's website, under Departments, under the Finance page, um, you can pull up our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and take a look at it.
I can hear the fingers heading toward the computers now to LewisvilleNC.net to take a look at those numbers.
Are there any other questions?
Pam, thank you very much. I always, I know we all appreciate the job that you do. And Monty, this'll be, how many years now that you've been working with us?
I think it's more than 20.
More than 20, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a long time.
We always appreciate your efforts and, uh, we're particularly pleased when we're able to share the kind of financial performance that we've had. The residents of Louisville can sleep well at night, I hope, to know that we're prepared for the many expenditures that we have coming down the road with our road projects, our sidewalk projects, our other improvement projects, of which we have to pay a percentage of, but also we're prepared in case of an emergency or, or when we deem necessary to have to pull money from the general fund. So thank you both for, for everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, ladies and gentlemen, we are at the first opportunity this evening for our public forum. This is your opportunity to come before the council, share with you things that are on your mind, that you would like us to hear. It's our chance to listen to what you have. And we have three speakers signed up this evening, and the first one is Harry Colvin. If you'll come forward and, uh, state your name and your address, please.
Harry Colvin, 1203 Meadow Chase Drive. Been a resident of Louisville for, it's 86, I can't even count the number of years. And, uh, like it very much, but I, our, our neighborhood, which is Ridgecrest, uh, at Welsey Place over off of, uh, Graneland Drive, has trees along the right-of-way of all the roads in the neighborhood. In my understanding, when the trees were planted, they were defined as what type of trees would be planted by the town. And Eisenhower, who is the, the developer of the, of the neighborhood, they were planted as very small trees, probably no more than three inches trunk size. They're now extremely large. Their roots are growing over the edge of the curbing. I spoke with Ryan Moser last year and he come out and looked and unfortunately, there was one in my front yard that was right, trees here and there's a storm drain right here. And, uh, he chose to take it down. But before he had taken it down, it had damaged my driveway by raising the concrete slab up nearly two inches from the roots. So that's one issue because many of the sidewalks have already had to be ground down where they've raised panels up to prevent people from tripping on them. And other folks have had problems with the trees. So that's one issue that I wanted to speak to. What can be done about the trees themselves? But the other issue is, I'd like to speak to the, to the option of possibly having the town provide leaf pickup and/or, uh, yard waste pickup. Those trees, I have filled my pickup truck full of leaves twice this year and I still don't have all the leaves out of my yard. And there's no easy way to travel to the yard waste dump with them because of course they blow all over the place, even if you cover them, they start blowing out from under the cover. And, uh, the people that do the leaf pickup now, in my understanding, all they do is just the gutters, they don't do a very good job. I was standing in my yard two days ago when they came through. They picked up leaves in front of my house and I live on the corner, road beside my house, they picked them up on one side, but didn't pick them up on my side of the road. And if you're trying to keep them out of the storm drains, that didn't help much because where they didn't pick them up, there was a storm drain right downhill from, from where all the leaves were. So the rain that's probably coming tonight and tomorrow would have washed probably most of them into the storm drain. But I think it would be beneficial to the neighborhood if we could, and probably to everybody else in the town that has trees that they have to dispose of leaves, uh, if the town would consider the possibility of providing, uh, leaf pickup in the fall. Two or three rounds and let us sweep them to the, to the curb and they pick them up, pick the leaves up. Because, uh, I'm not the youngest kid on the block anymore and when I get out there to do that, I have to wear a back brace and it's very uncomfortable and very hard for me to do that. So that's an issue just with me and I'm sure there's other people may have that same type of issue. But, uh, it would be beneficial to a lot of residents if we had that option built into our garbage recycle pickup. The other part of that is, it would be, also be nice to have yard waste pickup. I'm fortunate, I have a truck and I can haul my stuff to the yard waste dump. But there's many people in our neighborhood that first don't own a truck and second, the few that do, most of them, trucks don't look like they haul anything in them. They're too shiny. Mine's not shiny, mine's used as a work truck. But even that with the free passes we get to the, uh, either one of the dumps, that's still an effort to get them there. Anything you trim out of trees or whatever to, uh, get them to the yard waste dump. Also, we have a few people that insist on burning leaves and that's not good anywhere anymore. It's too dangerous, too easily to spread a fire, uh, if people do that. So I'd like the council to consider the possibility of including, either with Waste Management doing it or some other contractor, to at least have leaf pickup in the fall, but if possible, maybe twice a year, have yard waste pickup.
Thank you, Mr. Colvin. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Next individual signed up is Carol Scovera?
That's right.
That's a Western Pennsylvania pronunciation.
Well, my name is Carol Scovera and I live on Ridgecrest Trail. Harry's pretty much already covered everything that we've come here to talk about. And it's true, well, let me tell you first, with my situation with a tree that's at the bottom of my driveway. I've already called the town about it because my driveway's already been lifted up, it's cracked, it's already damaged and the sidewalk is hooved up. It's difficult for older folks to walk anymore. They have to be very careful in our neighborhood. And it was not addressed. I called, um, right after yours was taken down with, yes, Ryan Moser, and I got no response whatever about the tree. It doesn't need to be taken care of. And the, uh, the other issue, of course, is we do need, because we're pretty tight in there, pretty close together, we have nowhere to put debris from our yards, limbs and things that fall down. We do need some help with, with doing that. There's no place to do it. I don't have a pickup truck. So I have to pay somebody. If it meant getting the services and adding to a tax, which it may, it might be even cheaper than what I'm having to pay somebody to do it. That's pretty much what I have to say about it. So, um, Harry pretty much covered everything already.
Thank you, Carol.
I think it's your time.
Thank you.
Linda Campbell.
Uh, I'm Linda Campbell. I also live in Ridgecrest at Welsey Place on 7330 Metta Court, Meadow Chase Court. These guys have pretty much said, uh, we're mostly, we're all concerned about the leaves and the debris. We're also concerned about continual burning. We have more and more residential areas that are in the process of being developed. So obviously, we cannot continue burning and also address all our environmental concerns on top of that. So we would like some attention to that. And also, uh, I'm an HOA board member at Welsey Place. And there is one particular tree right now that it was marked way back in July and August to be cut down and the sidewalk is buckling. And, uh, at the very beginning, they put, uh, the town put in cones. I think they got stolen. They replaced the cones and they got stolen again. So the last, and I, I talked to Ryan Moser and whomever I can find, because, uh, our neighbors in the community were not happy with the third thing, uh, they came in, the town came in and they put in, uh, great big orange, uh, borders of, looks like fence, plastic fence around that area so no one would fall. And everybody understands the liability issues of tripping on sidewalks that are coming on, are coming up. But that plastic thing has been there for months. It is now November. The tree has had an X on it for a very long time and has not been looked at. I was told it was gonna come down in October, so we need to be patient and eventually it'll all be taken care of and maybe nobody would trip. Nobody can walk on that sidewalk because of the great big orange block that's in the way. Uh, I actually do have a picture of it, if anybody wants to see it, because now it's flat on the ground. It is also located right in front of a fire hydrant, always has been, so I think that's a big issue right there. You can't get to the fire hydrant because of the plastic piece. But I did have a suggestion that I talked to some other, uh, construction guys and they kinda shook their head. They said, in Clemmons, instead of putting up cones, instead of putting up those great big plastic, uh, fencing, is just mark that sidewalk with an orange paint. So people know it is there when they walk, they can see it. And that's easy. Uh, that would address that for the moment. Then I asked, why is that tree not been cut down? And I heard through the grapevine and my questioning, that one person in my neighborhood complained about cutting down trees. And, uh, but she didn't address it to the HOA board either. So one person should not dictate, and I think the answer was, as the town, we're researching, we have to check all the boxes and recheck and recheck. Well, this is November and it's been long enough that the tree needs to come down. We have a new owner of the particular house that it's in front of, uh, and they, I think, have made multiple phone calls about it. Didn't know that that was going on until they got in their house the last month or so. And they definitely want that moved and taken care of and their sidewalk's buckling, you know, and the driveway's coming up. So one person shouldn't have the right to stop this activity of cutting down the trees it needs to be. It's my understanding that as the trees are beginning to mature, they live in the older section, I'm in the younger section, so it's not as much of a tree issue yet. But I was told that one by one, eventually all trees will have to be removed in that entire neighborhood, but we'll do it slowly as it needs to happen and then possibly replace it with a tree that's more acceptable to put there, to replace it. We're not gonna leave it empty. The builder put the trees in and those trees, I think, well, I was told, do belong to the town of Louisville. But I would highly suggest it would be a really good idea is the homeowners association, uh, board members work with more closely, almost in any neighborhood, more closely with the town of Louisville on issues. Because to me, one person shouldn't dictate whether we cut a tree down or not. But a whole board of directors for the particular neighborhood knows what's going on in the neighborhood and they have some say so too. But technically, we can't do anything about it as a board because you guys own it, we don't. So it's not really an HOA board, uh, decision or right to take care of that issue. Uh, but we could also be working together more closely rather than relying on one person who lives in the neighborhood to dictate what happens through the whole neighborhood. She's just upset because she doesn't want trees knocked down. So, anyway.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. Appreciate you taking time. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Anyone at all? Folks, thank you very much for coming out. The two issues that you, um, are presenting tonight are ones that we certainly are aware of. I know we've had some, some, um, issues with the trees in your neighborhood and, and you're right, they are gonna have to be replaced. Uh, I, I don't know what the timeframe of that is, the council is aware of it. But little by little, whether we go through all of them one spring and take them out or whether we do them as they begin to present a problem, uh, they are gonna have to replace. Our plan is to, uh, take those down and then replace them with a new tree that's better suited and won't, the root structure won't disrupt the sidewalk or your driveways. I don't have a, a date for you when we're gonna do that, but the manager is sitting here and is nodding, which means that I'm, I'm confident that this may be our manager's, one of our manager's first assignments to figure out how we, how we go about it. We are aware of it and we want it, we wanna do something about it.
Can something be done, uh, within the next few weeks about the one house that has an X mark on the tree and that red plastic thing that's been sitting out there since July and August?
We're gonna, we're gonna run out and take a look at it. Yes, ma'am. The second thing is, is, is you brought up is leaves and, and, and yard clippings. For those members on the council who have been here for longer than dirt, this is, this is an issue that we, that comes up every single budget, budget year, should we provide leaf and limb pickup. I'm not saying that this is a reason to do it or not to do it, but it generally, it we, I think we've, we've calculated that it would result in about a cent or a cent and a half increase in the property tax. And that's a reoccurring cost so that we would have to budget it in as part of our revenue stream rather than making it a one-time expense. I'm pretty confident, it won't help us this year, and I'm pretty confident that as we go on to retreat in our, uh, next year period, I believe we're, we're scheduling for January, early February, our retreat, that this is one of the items that's gonna be on our, on our agenda for discussion. Uh, I always, I encourage you to, to, to pop in and, and, and speak to us about it, that, that what you're raising is on everybody's mind and we're certainly all aware of it. Hopefully, we'll be able to address some of the issues that you're talking about.
I would be willing to take the day pretty soon, actually, because even though you give us free passage to the, to the dump, there are expenses to drive all the way across town because it's not on the other side of the west, the yard lane stuff, but.
Understand, yeah. We're, we're gonna dive into the issue and see what we can, see what we can figure it out. We've experimented with some things over the years, but none of them have really, uh, proved to be effective. So we'll deal with it again.
So if you could be more reasonable, then it's easier to restrict the permit.
The, uh, actually, one, one results in the other. So. So, very good, folks. Thank you for being here. Thank you for taking time to come down and speak with us. Always nice when we can hear your concerns face to face as opposed to getting that anonymous letter left on my doorstep in the dead of night unsigned. So, thank you very much. Council members, any thoughts? Alrighty. Stacy, we're down to our first or our only public hearing tonight.
Sorry. Had to come from a different location than I'm used to. Dora is passing out for you. A handout that is of our future land use map. I'll get to that in my presentation in just a minute. But I wanted you to be able to kind of have it in your hands to take a closer look at it. It might be beneficial for you. Good evening, council. I know we've been, this has been a long time coming, this particular public hearing for our Lewisville rural overlay and our planned residential developments, UDO text amendment. Tonight, for the record, this is case UDO L 167, a text amendment to our unified development So I wanted to go through the major highlights of this text amendment. There's two components. The first one is our Lewisville rural overlay. That is a section in our ordinance already. But the thing that we found on a planning board level that wasn't clarified was the boundary of that Lewisville rural overlay. I'll call it the LRO for sake of time. So what we did is we took a look at our LRO in that, we also took a look at our planned residential developments. That is generally in the town what we see as residential developments, single-family housing that is of a certain, the point of a planned residential development is to cluster homes so that it is a more environmentally friendly way to do a more conventional subdivision because you have open space, you're leaving area open that are, lands that are more sensitive to things, more environmentally sensitive. So again, those are the two things that we mainly wanted to take a look at in this text amendment. So first, I'm going to go through the Lewisville rural overlay. If you'll see on the screen before you, again, I mentioned the future land use map. So the planning board toyed back and forth between, you know, do we carve out specific parcels? Do we take a look at specific areas in town? And then we came to the discovery of, we just recently adopted earlier this year, a new comprehensive plan. In that comprehensive plan is the future land use map that designates rural residential lands. The green area that you see on the map are those ones that are designated as rural residential. So we felt the easiest and best way to, A, incorporate our comprehensive plan with our UDO, our unified development ordinance, but also clarify the boundary of the LRO is to have that, okay, is to have that designation, just that our Lewisville rural overlay is designated as rural residential on this future land use map in our comprehensive plan. So that's the main first thing. So the reason that we wanted to go with this, if you'll advance the slide, please, Dora. You can see on the screen in front of you, and I won't read them for you, but these are some of the main purposes of the LRO in our Lewisville unified development ordinance. Preserving land, preserving rural character, environmentally sensitive areas, also encouraging planned residential developments and some other items. So that is a major reason why we thought the rural residential would be a great thing to serve as the boundary for our LRO because it goes hand in hand with what the purpose and intent originally was for that section of the overlay in our unified development ordinance. Dora? So I'll move on to our planned residential developments. As we were talking about our LRO and with our LRO encouraging PRDs, our planned residential, I know I'm using a lot of acronyms here, but when it encourages planned residential developments, we took a look at mainly conservation type subdivisions and conservation type development. These restrictions or this new proposal is more restrictive than what was originally in our ordinance, but it does still give a lot of options for developers. What we thought about was there are a lot of different developers that are coming to Lewisville that develop in many different ways. So we wanted to take a look at regulations that served all of those types of developments that may come our way and still protect the town of Lewisville and what we hold true to, our rural nature, we want to preserve land, we want to, you know, be cognizant of the environment, those types of things. So that's kind of what we had in the back of our minds when we were developing this text amendment. So when we go through that conservation design standards, you can see in front of you, there are two main areas. The first one is primary conservation area. Those are unbuildable areas, wetlands, floodplains, stream, pond, buffers, steep slopes. Those are the things that you're naturally going to find that federal law regulates already. That cannot count towards our open space requirements. For secondary conservation areas, those are the ones that are not protected generally by federal law, but that we still consider very important in the town of Lewisville. Woodlands, meadows, habitats, cultural features and scenic views. So that would be the secondary conservation area. If you have an area in, on your site, on your property that counts towards, or that is considered a secondary conservation area, you can use that property towards 20% of the total required open space in your planned residential development. So then we took a look at, well, there are some type of developers that like to use those conservation areas for things such as nature trails. They use them for, you know, if they want to develop a property that is in a wooded area, that they don't want to take out the woodlands or, you know, any different scenario, we wanted them to have that option as long as they were still developing environmentally friendly developments to come to us for alternative compliance. So we called it conservation alternative compliance. There are application that they'd have to go through before the planning board that would include things like an environmental analysis done by a professional that they would have to, they're having to prove to us that even though they want to use either the primary conservation or the secondary conservation area, that they are still developing consciously to our environment and protecting those areas for the intent of a planned residential development and also the Lewisville rural overlay in those sensitive areas of town. So those are the main, that's the main basis behind our conservation design standards that we were looking for, that we wanted to base the planned residential development on for our new regulations for this text amendment. We also are adding in buffer yard standards. At the perimeter of a buffer yard, there are certain instances that you have to have a 30-foot landscaped buffer. But we also wanted to keep in mind that in our rural areas, there, we have heritage corridors. If you'll see on your future land use map, those are designated, specific roads in the town through our comprehensive plan are designated as these heritage corridors. Well, now if they want to develop something on one of those corridors, they have to provide a 100-foot buffer yard to protect those scenic views and those vistas of our heritage corridors. So that is another thing that we have added into this proposal tonight. Thank you, Dora. So then moving on, another major change that we are taking a look at tonight or we are proposing is our maximum density and our minimum open space requirements. In our original text, they, you can see on the left-hand side of your screen in the blue, those things are being taken out. The reason they're being taken out is because they are now transferred to the table that you see on the opposite side of your screen. The maximum density, the incentive for the density bonuses. So you can see on the other side, for instance, we'll take AG, that's our agricultural zoning district. If someone develops a 40,000 square foot lot, which is the minimum lot size in agricultural zoning district, they are required to provide 30% of open space. But if they do lower density, if they only develop at 30, or excuse me, 30,000 square foot maximum densities, then, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. If they provide 50%, so if they provide more open space, that is an incentive for them to be allowed to have just a little bit more density. Does that make sense to everyone? So again, and we'll go a little bit further, in RS 20, if they only want to provide 30%, then they are required to do the maximum density of what is required by our UDO in that zoning district already. That's the minimum lot size, if you will, 20,000 square feet. But if they provide more open space, 50% of open space in their development, then that's an incentive that they can have a little bit more density. Okay? So the reason on the left-hand side, those are things are taken out is because they are being compiled into one table for it to be a little bit easier to understand and for more clarity in our ordinance in the table on the other side that you see. Good? Question?
I have a question. So when you were referring to the last slide where it had the 20%, how does the 20% on the secondary conservation area play into those 50 and 30 percentiles that you just spoke about?
It would be 20% of that 30. We would calculate it by their acreage.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions before we move on?
A question, please, Stacy. You said that if they had 50% open space, then they could have more density. You said a little more.
Right.
But, you know, I think I'm uncomfortable with not a definitive amount of how many more.
Yeah, it's definitive on the maximum density. That's the other, the square footage requirements that you see on the far side of the table, that is the maximum density that they were allowed. So they can't go over that number or they can't develop more intense than that number would allow them to.
Can you, can you describe what 20,000 square feet means in density?
20,000 square feet is about a half an acre. So what that would mean is they develop, if you take the entire acreage of the property and then you take out the open space required, what's left, the density would mean they can have one house per 20,000 square feet. Their lot sizes can be a little bit smaller, but it's still that same number of houses as it would be on normal 20,000 square foot lots. Okay? Yes, ma'am.
Just one more clarification. So the 20% is something that the developer's responsible for? Or do we define that 20%? I mean, obviously, it's based off of the acreage that they come to.
That would be part of their site plan that we would be reviewing when they came in for a proposal. Like, they have to show us the primary conservation areas, the secondary conservation areas, and then what, how much of that they're using for their open space and the calculations of that. That would have to be shown on their plan.
So could we have a developer come in and the back of the property that's really, really steep, count that as their 20% of open space?
No, they could not. That would be considered the primary conservation area and unless they had an environmental analysis and met those reasonings, for instance, showing us that the potential or actual impacts of the proposed development on the environmental, specifically in the, sorry, conservation areas, description of the impact, they're going to have to prove to us that if they want to use that as part of their development or part of their conservation area, that that environmental analysis is showing us that it's not, it's considered low-impact development, it is not a detriment to that steep slope or to that floodplain in order for them to count that towards their open space.
So when I'm thinking open space, I'm thinking usable. So we're not talking about usable open space. I mean, we're talking about a development, developer that could come in, we've got two slopes, as long as they can prove that it's environmentally appropriate, that it doesn't mean that there's going to be a space where people can walk and move and...
But in that environmental analysis, they're having to prove to us that it is still technically usable space.
Okay.
Like, for instance, they can't just say, I want to use the floodplain because I can't put any of their houses there. That was the main focus and the main purpose is, we did not want all of the leftover unbuildable land to be our open space.
Which is what California is running into right now.
Well, and we have ran into that here in the town of Lewisville as well. We want to protect those areas, but we don't want those areas to be protected and then everybody, every other inch to be built upon. You know, we still want that good balance of usable open space and then conservation space.
So we refer to usable somewhere in this. Okay. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Good questions. Thanks, Dora. Next. So I wanted to go through a little bit of the history with this text amendment just for transparency for the public to remind you kind of what we've gone through. So the planning board had before them discussions of the Lewisville rural overlay. We came to the planning board, or excuse me, I came to the planning board, we had a public hearing for those changes. We did have some concerns from some of the members of our community, some members of our development community, and so we wanted to go back to the drawing board. The public hearing had already been set for council, so we did come to council. And then council, if you remember, reverted it back to planning board so we could take, we could go back to the drawing board. In that instance, that's where planned residential developments came into the mix because we felt that was just as important for our Lewisville rural overlay and our sensitive areas in town and really any other areas in town for what this is trying to accomplish. That's why the planned residential development was added to this text amendment. When we added that, we did re-advertise because the changes were so significant. We did want to make sure and we checked that box so the public would know that we were going back to the drawing board and that this particular text amendment was a little bit different. Last month, we were able to hold the public hearing before planning board and they bring to you tonight a unanimous recommendation for this particular text amendment that's before you. Any questions you may have additional?
Yes, ma'am. I've got a question.
Yes.
So you said, when you were giving the history, thank you, this has been very helpful, that some of the public had some questions and concerns. Can you speak to that and how those were addressed at possibly this last public hearing?
Well, we didn't have anyone come to our public hearing for the planning board. Initially, the public, their concerns were that they wanted, they liked the thought of the Lewisville rural overlay and the boundary that we're providing for that, but I felt like they wanted a little bit more to make sure the lands around them were being conserved. So that's why we went back to the drawing board for this type of arrangement here. The development community were a little bit worried that it was too restrictive and that we were taking away possibilities of developments to come to Lewisville, to further that growth, that residential growth that we have here in Lewisville. And so that's why we wanted to make a really good balance between both of those. We did meet with three or four members, came to multiple planning board members and we worked with them through this text amendment, got good feedback from them. We talked to an engineer about our open space requirements and our percentages to make sure we were on the mark with that. So we had a good balance of protecting the land, still being available for development here in Lewisville so we can continue to grow in the right way. And then also, that good balance between the different types of developments that come our way. Not every developer develops the same, so we wanted to make it, we hope that we have made it, and we really think that we do something that all parties are well aware of and okay with tonight.
Council members, anything else for Stacy?
I have. Go ahead.
No, 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 go ahead. I wasn't sure if you were doing with your presentation or not. So you're doing your presentation.
I am, yes, sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, Melissa.
Thank you very much. This is extremely thorough. On this map, I see a bunch of colors and then I'm looking at Conrad Road and kind of there's some white space in there. What, tell me a little bit about the white space and what that's going to end up looking like or could be.
That space is outside of town limits. If you see, Dora, if you will go to that so that the public can see that future land use map.
So what happens when we talk about heritage corridor? What kind, are we still having the 100-foot buffers in that, along that particular? And how much of that, are we talking about half a mile? What are we looking at?
We would not for that particular area unless we can convince them to voluntary annex into town. That is part of our process. We do like to talk to developers that are developing on our borders to try to let them know the benefits of developing in Lewisville and to annex into Lewisville. If they do, then that 100-foot buffer would apply to them. But unfortunately, if they don't, then that buffer does not apply to them in that white space that you see.
How much, size-wise, are we talking about quarter-mile worth of road there that we could be driving down, a beautiful heritage corridor, and then you got 100-foot of protection and then all of a sudden we're at 15%?
It's probably a little bit more. Where Conrad goes through the green area, that's probably a little bit more than a quarter of a mile.
Okay.
I would say the white area is probably closer to, I mean, essentially, definitely less than a mile there in that, in that white area. less than a mile there in that, in that white area. Where you see the road that stops right above the green on Conrad, where it intersects with Conrad, that's Grapevine. So to the south of Grapevine is within town, and then to the north is not. And then above that, the yellow that you see, just to kind of orient you, that is Conrad Farm, that development. So just to kind of give you an idea of where exactly that is along Conrad Road.
Thank you.
And we always strive to get people to annex into town.
Can't understand why they don't want to.
I know, we try, we try.
And we have had, actually, as the councilor recalled, we've had a request for voluntary annexation in an area to the west of town, formerly to the west of town. They wanted to come in because our requirements were, oddly enough, in some ways, less restrictive than the county's requirements. And so they wanted to come in, so we wanted to maintain that balance as well. So we hope that people will, if Stacy's urging and the council's urging isn't sufficient, sometimes the interest in being able to do, you know, better grade of development and not be, you know, under the county's common area, common area, common space or open space area is not, is less restrictive under Lewisville's provisions.
I think for me, it's just if I think about Heritage Corridor and I'm driving down a road, consistency of what the buffer yard, you know, the buffers look like is extremely important. And so, you know, I think that that's definitely an area that, as we define this Heritage Corridor and we work with other organizations in the county and developers, we need to really kind of watch that. Good job, Stacy.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? Lots?
Yes. I have notes.
Yes, ma'am.
Having been on the plane, thank you very much. And you guys have spent how many months working on this?
Since April. Initially, our first conversation started in April.
Yes.
They've been working very hard. I have to give kudos to the planning board for the hard work that they've done on this.
So you hit a lot of my key questions, which was just the process by which, so this was unanimous. You tapped into the community, you went through various resources who were sort of subject matter experts. Did you look at any other municipalities and any of their standards or best practices?
Yes, we did. Across the state and even across the United States, I don't have them specifically listed in front of me. But as you know, Jean Marie, we do have a process that we tend to go through when we do text amendments and specific ones that we look for, different municipalities that are similar to Lewisville, we look to see kind of what their regulations are. Some had conservation. A lot of times, you'll see something like this in the western part of the state for steep slope development to try to protect those areas. So there were a lot of different municipalities that we looked at, even our local ones here in Forsyth County, to see kind of what everyone else is doing. We didn't want to be completely different, but for the purposes of, you know, still making Lewisville a great place for people to want to grow here. But yes, we did look at a lot of other ones through the planning board, through our research.
And can you just speak to the open space versus green space?
It's kind of interchangeable. Open space, you know, you can really call it either or. Green space, I think, is a little bit more towards any of the land that would be considered open or not built upon. Those steep slopes, those stream buffers, we tend to use the term open space as wanting it to be somewhat semi-useable space. And I think green space kind of more so encompasses all of that area and all of those conservation areas where, you know, we would want our open space to be a little bit more usable.
So, yeah, I was looking at the, what do you call it, the PCA and the SCA, and you differentiate there. So it looks like you're speaking to the open space and the usability, to Councilwoman Hunt's point. But the green space was the important part of the character of the town, the vistas and the natural environment, and that's in all of our comprehensive plans. So when these site plans come forth, is that something that the planning board with these documents and requirements, that's something that has an element of planning board subjectivity or?
Yes, yes. And that's why we wanted to incorporate those conservation areas in our corridor, buffet yard, around our vistas and our scenic views is a big reason, coming from our comprehensive plan, why we wanted to incorporate that to our proposal tonight.
And common recreation area, I just, I think I understand intuitively what you mean here, but you have life care development and other housing occupied by persons who are at least 55 years or older or disabled or exempt from this requirement. What was the thinking behind that?
That is something that we did not change. That comes from the original planned residential development when it was put into the ordinance years ago. So I don't necessarily know exactly what the thinking behind that was. The way I would interpret it is generally if you have those that are 55 or older, which I think I would think that number would be, needed to be a little higher. 55 is not old, in my opinion, but...
Kind of curious about that.
You know, that, most of those are not going to have young children playing on a playground or something like that. So their open space would be more passive versus active recreation is, or that's kind of where. It's not that they can't provide that, it's just it would not be, in this particular instance, it's not required that they provide that.
And maybe the bigger term of the life care development, they're referencing disabled and over 55, but I would certainly expect that over 55 population would certainly be very interested in being active and having...
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think that was 10D. It had something to do with the character, here with me here.
I think that was more of the...
Yeah, this is what I'd mentioned about, just to...
Active, active recreation.
It's good to hear you mentioning the balance between open space, usable space, and green space because that seems to be the heart of what a lot of people are interested in, just making sure these vistas, the stuff that we love about Lewisville is maintained. And finally, if you are an adjacent neighbor who gets a notice saying, "Hey, there's a PRD that's going to be coming to a lot near you," what could you say to the community around how this is in their best interest for managing growth and development in Lewisville?
Well, again, what we wanted to do was conserve our sensitive areas. We did not want every inch of a piece of land to be developed or to, you know, be subdivided into a lot. So I feel like this particular text amendment or this particular proposal does that. I think it does protect and lends itself much more to exactly what a planned residential development is designed to do, where the homes would be clustered, and then you do have your open space and your green space left so that it does conserve the space and does utilize the land to the highest potential of the actual piece of property rather than just, you know, sprawling the development all over the property and then there's nothing left. So it, in my opinion, if it protects our environment, if it protects our rural character, then that in itself is what our comprehensive plan calls for. That's what we're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else, council members? Very good. Well, we are in a continuation of our public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wish to speak in favor of or in support of or in opposition to the proposed changes in our UDO? Nobody wishes to speak? Very good. We'll close the public hearing. Council members, any other thoughts? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Smith makes the motion. Dr. Sadler makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you for a great job, Stacy. You know, folks, if you've been watching at home and sitting here in the audience, you've heard a lot of, like, we'll call it technical language and lots of concepts that we've put it out. To boil it down, what everything that Stacy was just talking about is our effort to try to preserve the small-town character or rural charm of Lewisville. And that's what all the technical things and all of the definitions and everything that you just heard is trying to do. And that's directed to us by the comprehensive plan, of which many of you had a finger in helping us develop. All righty. Dora, you're up with old business.
Yes, sir. In front of the council is...
That's over 55, of course.
It's the 2023 meeting schedule that includes the schedule for the council boards and committees as well as the council retreat that staff is proposing for your consideration of adoption.
Council members, we were briefed on this.
You put it up.
Yep. Behind us. Oh. Thank you.
Folks, while some of our council members are digesting, you can see these are the meeting schedules of all of our boards and committees. So they are staffed by our town staff, but they're manned or personed by volunteers in Lewisville. So you can see that our residents are actively involved in many of the aspects of the matters that come before the council. I guess this is a great time to plug how grateful we are of their giving of their time because some of these groups meet monthly, some meet more than once a month, but they're folks just like you who care about their town and want to see it to be a better place. Any questions, council members?
Yes. Dora, would you mind having a printout for these for us, please, of that meeting schedules and...
Very good. There's no other questions. We'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? I thought I heard you. Did you not open your mouth? You did open your mouth.
I opened with Melissa, but thank...
That's okay. I recognize those microseconds sometime. We'll give, we'll give Ms. Foster the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Budget calendar, please.
So before the council is the 2023 proposed budget calendar for your consideration.
With the changes from briefing?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are reflected.
Any questions? Entertain a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Ms. Hunt makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Dora?
The next item before the council is ordinance 2022-059, establishing a public art advisory committee. This has been discussed in detail in the last couple of agenda briefings.
Just as they, you just want to give us a couple of sentences of what we're trying to accomplish here? Not to throw a curve at you.
That's okay. I'll go to my staff report. So the committee, the town was interested in developing an art committee, and it's an expansive art committee. It is for public art, which would include indoor and outdoor public art, which could consist of what you consider art or pottery, but it could also include outdoor sculptures, murals, things of that nature. This committee would consist of five members that would meet as needed, and they would review applications coming in requesting to display art, either temporary or even permanently in the town of Lewisville.
Very good. What was the impetus behind this, ladies and gentlemen, was we have this lovely new community center with lots of wall space, and we've been asked how to, how can we liven it up a bit? And one of the answers was, well, if we have artwork. So we'll reach out to the members of our community and see if they wish to exhibit and display their works, and if so, they can make an application before this committee, which is probably their taste is much more appropriate than my taste, to try to determine what should hang there. But this is a formal process so that people can have their artwork displayed in our community center and our residents can enjoy the talent that is here in Lewisville. Any questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Dora, so once, if it's approved to go through the public art advisory committee, we will start looking for those five members? I mean, how quickly do you think that will be formed? And then when can residents send in applications to that committee?
So under the staff report that was presented to the council, we are recommending, since it is time to begin soliciting applications for all of our boards and committees already, that we do the requests for these during that same timeframe. Those are, council appoints those in March with the service beginning April 1st.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
And during our discussion, I believe, I recall that we indicated that this was not to promote any particular artist or the sale of any particular artwork. Is that, is that right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Any other questions? Any other comments?
I have a comment, not so much about this per se, but so far, Dora, with your presentations, and I noticed in our packet that you've added a staff report for these items. I don't know if you can pull it up or not, but it's excellent. It's a crisp executive summary of what it is that you all are explaining to us sort of verbally, but it's just very helpful, and I think it'd be helpful for the community to be able to have access, to have some information around some of the documents that we have. So thank you very much, whomever was behind that. That was very additive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Entertain a motion, please.
Over approval.
Second.
Dr. Sadler makes the motion. Ms. Foster makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Dora?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to get back to where we were at. The next four items, we'll take them one by one. They are applications submitted to the council requesting facility use exemption. And these four were individuals or groups that had requested exemption prior to the moratorium, and they were put on hold. And these are the four out of the six that had expressed interest that are still requesting exemption. So the very first one would be for West Forsyth Christian Preschool.
A little background of what they're...
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip over to the page for it. They are requesting consideration for exemption. They would like to hold their annual fundraiser, that is a silent auction gallery hop, that serves 125 to 150 people, whereby the funds raised are used to improve the preschool and playground at the, of their facility. Right now, they are requesting usage of the Mary Alice Warren Community Center on April 21st of 2023.
And, Dora, is that, that date's open, I assume?
I don't know. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah. Thank you.
But do they benefit the town and the citizens of the town?
Our young people. Preschool.
Is it our town? Is there any documentation that says that?
She should have an application for them.
Well, they are located in the town limits, and it does not say how many of the students are actually located inside the town limits.
But they are located in the town.
Yes, sir. They're located at 125 Lewisville Clemens Road.
The other thing we discussed before about this was that, and I haven't looked at the application in a couple of weeks, but it, the majority of these folks that are on their board are Lewisville residents, as I recall.
Yes, all of these, again, it's consistent with what you had shared and queued up for us at the briefing. Is that correct?
These are the exact same applications you received at the briefing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, and the question, I guess, that we need maybe a little guidance on or thoughts from council members, and I'm not singling this one out in particular, but more as an example, this is a private preschool. You have to pay to attend. It's generally not open free to the public. The fundraiser they're going to use is to, is for that organization, and that's fine. But what I want to be sure we're conscious of is that now any other organization that may be private, may not be open to, in general, to the residents of Lewisville, can now come before the council and ask for exemptions.
Right.
Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong in my train of thought here, over the last several months, we have spent considerable amount of time talking about who these folks are, if you will. Looked at several different renditions of long list of, I'm going to call them rules for lack of a better term, that people have to meet the criteria to request the exemption. I was under the assumption at that time, once we adopted that stuff... I was under the assumption at that time, once we adopted that stuff, that the applications will be turned into staff. Staff would then judge, if you will, does it meet the criteria that we put into place, and then make a recommendation of yes or no to the council for these approvals. So that we do not debate this every single time somebody makes a request, and then try to make a judgment at this level, are they meeting what we've already put into place?
Dora, do you have the criteria that we've established that might be helpful as a point of reference?
I do not have it with me. One moment.
And you're right, Mr. Franklin, we went through a list of criteria.
We've spent an inordinate amount of time on this already to be plowing these furrows again on an individual basis.
And I don't remember any opposition to any of these.
No.
During our discussion. I mean, we could always revisit and modify if we, if we find that there are issues going forward. So anyway, I mean, that'd just be my, that'd just be my suggestion.
Well, following Mr. Franklin's comments, then we would be looking for a staff recommendation on whether to approve or not.
Going forward, I think that's what we, I thought that's what we had put into place, quite frankly. We ultimately still have that final approval, but that we put the, we put the, what you gotta meet.
Right.
That's, we've spent a lot of time on that. That's a document.
Yep.
And then it should be staff makes the evaluation. Is it meeting what we put in that document? If it does, make the recommendation to us one way or the other.
Yeah, that's, that's why if we had, if we had that criteria, it would be helpful.
Right. And I have some vague recollection that rather than act on these, even at briefing, that staff thought that they didn't want to make a decision about this, that they were gonna bring it back. Is that wrong? Am I misremembering that?
I don't believe staff was under the impression that we were making an actual recommendation to you, yes or no.
But I guess my point, Mayor, is that we, sitting in this environment on a monthly basis, shouldn't have to reread this every time and make a determination after reading that application, do they meet this or not? It needs to come with a staff recommendation, one way or the other, when it comes to us. It's what my point is. They have, we're paying them to read this each time to get real familiar with it.
Yeah. I mean, we can make that part of the process.
I mean, you know, that's, that's the way I thought it was gonna be working, quite frankly.
If you look here in the document, it says may be approved by town council. Maybe we need to direct, have some more stat, you know, state in the actual policy that staff will be making recommendations to us.
Clarify it, certainly.
Because it's, that's exactly right.
Well, or at least make the evaluation, and then make the staff recommendation, does it meet the intent of this or not? The organization that has applied.
Dora, is there any urgency with any of these requests?
Yes, sir. There is one for the Tim Sutton Ministries.
Right.
Oh, and Lewisville United Methodist Church is wanting to hold an event in December. So there's two.
We don't have the criteria handy. Can staff, I guess the question is, can staff at this particular point say that every one of these meet the criteria that we had established?
I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that right now, no, sir.
Yeah.
And Mayor, at this point in time, I have read the material that was provided from all these organizations and everything, and I currently make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-060, or excuse me, yeah, 060.
What's this on the screen right now?
That's the...
That's the West Forsyth one.
No, what was on the screen was the guidelines.
Right, yeah.
Yep. I'll second that motion.
Dora, you have something up there?
It was up.
I can go back to what was...
There it is. That was it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Staff, we have a, actually, council, we have a motion and a second?
I don't feel comfortable.
Is there any discussion? Very good.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable doing this right now. I mean, I know this is set in front of us, and we have guidelines, but to be fair to everyone, whether you're nonprofit or paying, as long as you're a resident, you should have access to the community center. And if we are going to continue to give it away, give days away to people that are nonprofit, then we're taking away from people that aren't nonprofit. And then we've also set aside that we're going to raise mon, use this to help fund the town because we're gonna use the profits that come from it, because we didn't raise taxes, because that was gonna be a portion of the budget. And if we keep giving days away, well, then that's days that we're not charging for. So I'm, I'm just on the fence. I'm, I'm really on the fence. I'm usually one to approve stuff and go on, but this, this has me twisted because whatever we say now is gonna also set a precedent going forward, and it's a new thing. And we're human, and we're gonna make mistakes. I, I just have reservation because they're private. Then the Kiwanis, I have reserv, I know we're not there yet, but I'm gonna continue to talk. The Kiwanis, yes, they have members that live in Lewisville, but when I looked at their website, there's nothing that their Kiwanis does that provides any benefit to the citizens of Lewisville. So to me, that goes against what we're setting this. I mean, it's just like Stacy said in the briefing. We have a very nice place, and everybody and their brother wants to come. Well, I want to make sure that everybody and their brother that goes is a citizen or something of Lewisville, because that's who built it.
If I recall from briefing, we had some conversations about setting a maximum to the amount of days or setting some kind of boundary around these, these organizations, whether it's one day or, you know, we had had some discussion. I don't really recall where we ended up at on that. I think the goal with this coming before us this evening was simply because these people had been sitting here for months, and, and one gentleman in particular had come and given public comment requesting exemption. And then we just kind of said, well, if we're gonna have an exemption on this fellow, kind of, we're gonna go ahead, the applications that were in there. And, and I do think, David, that you bring some very valid points to the conversation, and I think that is something that we probably should go back and, and really dive back into. But to Fred's point, or Councilman Franklin's point earlier, we've spent numerous amounts of hours on this and time, and I believe that Parks and Rec spent a little bit of time on it early on when, when we developed the community center. So I think the goal this evening is for us to just proceed forward with these organizations. And, you know, we can, we can always set some minimums, that it's just for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. You know, if they're asking for Christmas parties this year, maybe we just limit it to this year, and then we reevaluate. We have that authority. So I still remain with my second.
I'm very comfortable with what you just proposed. If Mr. Frank, Franklin would consider amending his motion to make this effective for 2022 only, give us a chance to dive back into it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll amend the motion for that, yes.
We accept the motion as, we just accept...
Well, the West Forsyth request is for April of 2023.
I still think we have enough time with them, because we don't even know if it's available on our date. Yeah.
Will you accept that, with a second, or accept that change to the motion?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Council members?
Perfect.
Any additional questions? Very good. Then the motion as restated is to approve, we're approving these one at a time, to approve 2022-060 for a duration of 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Thank you. That is six and one with Mr. Smithman in opposition. Dora, we have the Kiwanis Club is next.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They are requesting, they would like to use the facility for special club events or joint meetings with other community clubs as they plan projects. They would attempt to avoid busy holiday periods and will not request facilities for routine meetings. They have not given a specific date for their initial consideration.
Mr. Franklin, would you accept the same motion for this one?
I'm not gonna make that same motion because of the fact, the way that, that the request reads is for multiple times, and I'm uneasy with that right now. That's the reason I won't make the same motion for this one.
Very good.
Not to say I might not vote to approve it, but I'm not gonna make that same motion.
Council members, we do need a motion either to accept or deny.
Or push it back.
Well, we postpone. I mean, I think we want, I think we want to revisit this just a little bit.
Well, then I'll, I'll make a motion to postpone it, because, again, I'm, either, either the staff goes through it and, or either, I don't want to make it so hard on them. I just want to make sure we get it right.
So we have two months left. I mean, maybe we could just say we approve to, maybe a motion.
Well, they said holidays, they would not want to. I just don't want to give them the open...
So, Mayor, would it be appropriate if I made a motion to approve ordinance 2022-061 with a limitation of two meetings for the calendar year of 2022?
That certainly, that certainly could be a motion, yes. Do you have a motion pending?
But you already have...
Exactly right. We have a motion from Mr. Smithman to postpone.
That's correct.
I'll second his motion.
We have a motion and a second to postpone consideration. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
No, nay, nay.
Nope. Mr. Franklin, you're not in favor of postponing?
No.
Okay. Six one with Mr. Franklin in opposition.
So on this one, the reason I want to postpone and second that motion is because it was unclear to me how exactly what they're wanting to do. I mean, I heard what Dora said, but they must have some historical reference because they're not new as an organization. So they know what they've been doing on a year-to-year basis and what the potential need might be. So I'd like to have a little more clarity. It was sort of vague to me what, what they suggested they wanted to do with this thing. And I'd like more clarity around, you know, what they've done historically in this regard, and then therefore what they might need going forward.
Dora, was there any of that information in their application?
No, I actually had to request what, what they wanted to use, and that was the wording that they gave me.
Okay.
And I, and I think if we look at what's in front of us on the screen, E and F specifically underneath an organization that conducts the majority of its activities, that would be nice if they could clarify that majority, to Dr. Sadler's point, the majority of the activities, and then what programming they're gonna make significant in the town of Lewisville.
This is where we wait in that gray area again, because as I understand it, their activity is to provide assistance to primarily the residents of Lewisville during the Christmas season.
So the Kiwanis Club of Clemens, so you think that would be the authority?
Well, they are seeking to change their name to the Kiwanis Club of Northwest Forsyth.
So we're, we're treading through gray water, as we would say.
Nothing black or white.
Nothing black or white. Dr. Sadler, how much I know that...
How much clarity as they can provide. I mean, they, they have some historical experience, and they can tell us exactly how that applies to what they're requesting.
Yeah, I would, I think with this particular one, though, he, the, the definitive answer needed to be given to him tonight because he has to plan it for December.
You're talking about, oh, are we on Sutton now?
Talking about Kiwanis or Sutton?
No, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were jumping down to Mr. Sutton, yeah.
Oh, no, no, no.
I thought we were still on Kiwanis, too. Okay.
Yeah, I'm still talking about the Kiwanis Club.
Very good. So we have a motion to postpone this?
We already voted on that.
We voted on, okay.
No, we voted on Kiwanis. We voted on both of those. Yeah, we voted on both of them. I was just trying to get some clarification, more clarity around the Kiwanis request.
Yeah. When they come back with a postponement. When they come back. Correct.
Right, yes. Very good. So now we're down then to 062, which is Tim Sutton Ministries.
There you go. Yes, sir.
To approve?
Second.
There's a motion? To approve and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous.
No, I didn't vote.
Well, it's still...
Would you like to vote no on that?
Go ahead. Unanimous.
Okay. Very good.
Yes.
Ordinance 063, Lewisville United Methodist Church.
Yes, sir. They are wanting to use the Mary Alice Warren Community Center on December 14th for their annual holiday dinner for teachers and board members of their preschool. And if the facility works well this year, they would like to use it again next year. They already have December 14th, 2022 booked. They have not made payment yet. Brian Moore has that on hold, awaiting council decision this evening.
Council members?
And, Dora, they are the main ones that came to us and brought these others to our attention, because they've been waiting and waiting to hear.
Well, all four of these before the council have been waiting since January or February.
And I think they were first.
I, I don't have that information in front of me. I'm sorry.
Well, they're definitely a Lewisville thing.
I move for approval.
I'll say.
Ms. Mulch makes the motion to approve. Mr. Smithman makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pause, pause. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Counsel?
Counsel, I'm assuming that with, with still the discussion we had and the, maybe the uncertainty that some of us have about what we're trying to do here, we may want to revisit this with staff and have them clarify in terms of also process whether council approves this, or whether it's a staff approval, if the guidelines are clarified.
That's correct.
And Mayor, may I add, in addition to who's approving what, if it makes sense for us to have any limitations as the number of meetings or that type of thing, I'd be curious to hear what staff recommends on that, on that side of things as well.
Very good. Thank you. Dora?
Sorry.
Should be easy to close a road.
It should be. NCDOT, we have spoken to them. They do not have anything planned in the area that would prevent us from declaring a road closure for our annual Christmas parade. Therefore, ordinance 2022-056 is presented to you for your consideration.
Any questions? Entertained a motion, please?
Second.
Ms. Foster makes a motion, Mr. Smithman makes a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Stacy?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight before you is ordinance 2022-057, a budget amendment for security cameras in the amount of $42,966.28. If you recall, council asked staff to take a look at the count, the cameras that we had in place at all of our town facilities, including Town Hall, Annex, the Square, and Jack Warren Park, Community Center, Old Community Center, all of our facilities. A lot of the technology that we have is out of date. Some of those cameras are failing. The resolution is not great for what we would like to be able to use them for, and so we, we took that advice from council. We went and took a look at, State Security is who we have our contract with for our facility, the security of our facilities, and to replace all of the cameras and to add cameras in places that we have blind spots, that is the quote, the amount that was given to us. So that is what the abudment, the budget amendment is before you tonight for.
Any questions, Stacy?
I do.
Yes, sir.
And tonight, I don't have that, the report in front of me, but my recollection of the Old Community Center, I had a question about, there are no cameras there now, right?
I believe there are some. Not very many.
Because I knew there was no Wi-Fi. I thought there was no Wi-Fi there. So how do they operate?
There's not. I think that they are kind of wired, I believe.
Hardwired. Okay.
Now, these new ones would be wireless.
Wi-Fi.
And was that included in this quote?
Yeah.
The Old Community Center? The Old Community Center?
It was. It was, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Number in there, it's, I can't remember what the dollar amount is right now.
It's mostly replacing existing cameras, so.
In the Old Community?
In the Old Community Center, yeah.
There's cameras inside as well.
Yeah, because part of that discussion, I recall, is that there is no Wi-Fi there.
Right.
So, they would have to be hardwired.
Right, for that building.
The point I'm getting to, and I don't know where people can view or access those cameras right now. What's the amount for it? I just, until, first off, I don't know what the particular security issue is there that we would be wanting to protect against beyond what we've been able to do with whatever we've got there now. And then the expense...
Pardon me?
There, sure.
And then the expense associated with it until we know for sure what we're going to do with that facility. That's the only one that I remember thinking, why would we be spending this money on that facility now? Particularly if there are wired cameras in there now because they have to be accessed somewhere now.
Right.
If they are, if they're not, then, and we've not had an issue, then, I don't know...
Currently, they're being recorded on like tapes, for instance. That's why it's outdated. But this new technology, like the ones, the new ones that we have in the Mary Alice Warren Community Center when that was constructed, we can see that on computers. Facilities manager can pull it up on his phone, those types of things. I will add to that, we have had in the most recent weeks, some cameras fail. They're just, they're no longer supported. And if those were to be replaced with what the new technology is now, it doesn't work with our old system.
Sure.
So, eventually, they're, you know, kind of going to start dying out one by one.
I can't see the total, but...
Yes, sir.
Dr. Sadler, are you suggesting, consider, doing nothing at that particular so it would reduce from $49,000 down to 41 or whatever?
Whatever the number would end up being. Particularly if what you've got there now is not connected in any, it's not going to prevent you doing everything else based on what I'm understanding you to say.
Right, it shouldn't.
Yeah. And if what's in place right now has been satisfactory to monitor the facility, I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, until we know a defended use of that place, I wouldn't spend a, whatever, was it 8,400 bucks. That's just me. I mean, that's...
I think that's a good point. But we will continue to be able to monitor it with the old system.
As long as the cameras stay functioning.
Yeah. And we're in the middle of facility usage conversations, to your point.
But in the meantime, how much usage is it currently getting? We want to make sure that...
The Old Community Center, our rentals at that facility are minimal, but we do have a senior exercise facility, you know, so it is somewhat used. We don't have very much usage of that either, but it is an open public facility that the public can go to for different reasons.
So, board meetings meet there once a month.
That's right. They still meet there as well.
That's just a nod.
Boy scouts, girl scouts, that were generally meeting, they're meeting at the new facility.
Been holding meetings in the building. A reporter that used to cover for us from Clemmers Currier.
Me, that my car has broken into, but it's been a long time.
That's what I'm saying. When we were having meetings, I was going to say that the reporter from Clemmers Currier had her breasts on the stove.
Ken, as long as we can confirm that the current cameras will continue to monitor that building until they fail, and that gives us some time to decide what it is we want to do with that building. So, Ken, do you want to make the appropriate motion then?
Yeah, my motion would be to remove from consideration the, however it's termed in here, the, I'm drawing a blank on the name of it.
Galloway.
The Galloway Community Center from consideration.
I think it's called the Old Community Center in their document.
The Old Community Center. Whatever the term is here.
Right over there.
Yeah, one right over there. Yeah, wherever it says on here, Old Community Center.
There's a motion on the table?
Second.
Motion's been seconded by Mr. Smitherman.
And that is to only do away with this one.
Correct.
That's correct. I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion to approve all the remaining ones? Because I'm not sure we quite articulated that. Okay, so it's just to remove that?
Correct.
This was for a particular budget amendment, so do we need to clarify an amount for that?
It'll be minus the $7,992.50.
It was 8,400. 8,473 or something?
That includes sales tax. We're not subject to sales tax, so we take the free tax amount.
Okay. Yeah, okay, then whatever that, whatever the number should be. Ms. Foster.
Thank you. Financially, I get it. I just want to have it underscored that from a safety and security standpoint, pulling this out, from a staff standpoint, you guys have reviewed this and assessed this, and you made this recommendation to begin with. Are staff saying they're okay with that change?
I do think, and our manager might have a take on it, too, as well, but, you know, I do think we can always come back with our other systems being upgraded if, you know, a month, two months, two years from now, if we did want to upgrade the Old Community Center, then at that point, it is going to be much easier to go on to a more updated system since we are, you know, speaking to talk, to go ahead and do the upgrades to the other facilities. It's just, you know, up to council's pleasure either way. James, you have anything?
That's great. I would agree with the assessment, and I'd also add that with the quote they have there, it does not affect our pricing on the remaining items. So, we certainly support the motion as stated.
Very good. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Stacy. So, my understanding is that you will communicate, I guess, to the Sheriff's Department that we really want to watch that and that it is working, and as soon as it's not, that we are notified. So, there is always protection there because I'm thinking with the new system, why not put something there that will eventually go there anywhere that just monitors in general the area?
The way that it works with the Sheriff's Department is with the Old Community Center as it is now, they can't tap into that system and watch, say, for instance, from the Sheriff's Department downtown. The new system, they will be able to do that. The old system is just recorded, and you have to go into and just go back and replay the video. If we see something that kind of went wrong, we would have to go back and look. For the new items at the other facilities, then the Sheriff's Department, we would give them access for them to go in and be able to monitor it anytime they wanted to.
Is there an alarm system in that building?
In the G. Galloway?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it is on.
Yeah, so it's alarmed, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
We do have two county properties that are adjacent to that particular property that if we needed to utilize video, if there's camera accessibility.
I don't know what they're, yeah, or what we might could see from their facilities.
Is there any additional discussion? We have a motion, and we'll restate it, to eliminate the G. Galloway Center cameras from the current upgrade proposal.
Yeah.
Can we roll it in?
It says Town of Lewisville Old Community Center is what it...
Yeah. And is that part of the 43, Ken?
It is, yes.
Ken, would you rethink your motion and go ahead and make approval for?
The rest?
The rest of it with the keeping out?
No, you've got this motion.
Let's just do this one.
You can always ask for an amended motion.
Right, you can, but let's just do this one. I don't think there's going to be any opposition.
I'm just trying to think for streamlining. Very good. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, let me just go back. All those in favor, please hit the five-hand. Two, three, four. Okay, five. All those opposed? Two. So, that's five to two. All righty. Do we want to approve the revised contract now?
I want to comment on this one before we move forward, though. There was no lack of consideration for security in the making of that recommendation. And based on the fact that the building does have an alarm system and the ability for us to monitor it in the same way it's been monitored for how many years now?
A lot.
A lot. I don't, I don't, I don't believe that there are any risks or issues of security beyond what existed.
Very good. Next item, council members, is the approval for the purchasing of cameras with the exception of what we just removed from the previous motion.
This is the budget amendment topic that we were talking on.
Right, and the motion was not on the budget amendment ordinance?
Just to remove?
It was simply to remove.
Right.
To remove it from both of them.
The effect of it's going to be to modify the budget amendment ordinance, but the motion was to remove from consideration that part of it.
So, we're still...
Now, we're voting on the revised budget amendment.
Yeah.
All righty.
Now, what is that figure that would replace 42,966.28 now?
And on this budget amendment, it's got the G. Galloway Community Center listed, so it's not consistent with what we just...
The motion would be to approve this with revisions.
Correct, yeah. Probably a revision to that G. Galloway to make sure that it's consistent. So, the revised amount will be $34,973.78.
Council members, any further questions? Not long after came a motion.
I'll move approval of the budget amendment as revised 2022-057.
I'll make the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. All righty. James, I'm sorry. Yeah, James, we're down to you.
No.
Shut up, my glasses on. We'll have to be a help here. Okay, now, this is awarding the contract. Very good. Council members, we have a motion to approve the contract as amended.
You may want to consider, in your budget amendment, you removed a portion of it, so are you going to do a similar kind of motion for your contract?
Or we just say a multiple contract?
I will make it, I will make a motion to approve resolution 2022-064 with consideration of the budget amendment that was previously approved.
There's a motion?
Oh, second.
That makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Now, down to James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Resolution 2022-065 of the Lewisville Town Council, this is the appointment of a deputy finance officer. Now, it's considered good professional practice for a town or local municipality to have a backup to the finance officer in the event that the officer is off work, on vacation, or other absence. The prior town manager here in Lewisville served in that role, and I can confirm that I also served in that role in the prior jurisdiction which I served. So, in this particular case, we're proposing, recommending that we go ahead and appoint the town manager as a deputy finance officer to be the backup to our main finance officer.
Any questions for our manager? Entertaining motion, please?
I'll move.
Ms. Hunt makes the motion. Ms. Walsh makes the second. Any further discussion?
I just, for clarification, as we discussed, I think at briefing, there's no budgetary impact here, and there's no FTE change as a result of this motion or amendment. Is that right?
Yes, sir. Correct on both counts.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. All righty. Administered reports. Mr. Manager.
Great. Well, I'm pleased for the next agenda item to report on upcoming, upcoming events as well as closures at Town Hall. As indicated by our sergeant earlier this evening, November 11th tomorrow is Veterans Day. Town offices will be closed. We also have the Thanksgiving holiday coming up later this month, November 24th through 25th, and we also have events coming up after that very shortly. After Thanksgiving, we swing into the Christmas season. On December 2nd, the Christmas tree lighting will be at 7:00 PM at Shallowford Square. On December 11th, this is a big event, the Christmas parade at 3:00 PM. We're real excited about that. There's also a cardboard recycling program coming up. Well, it's around the holidays, so December 21st through the 30th, as those boxes and things come in, we do have that recycling program. And then, of course, it's been in the newsletter, as have these other events. And last but not least, in December, December 23rd and 26th, all of Town offices will be closed for the Christmas holiday.
Roll on, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. We have, I'm pleased to make an announcement this evening, and we have somebody who we'd, I'd prefer to stand up so she can be in the camera. I'd like to embarrass her at this moment. I, in the nicest possible way, I am pleased to announce both for our mayor and Town Council, as well as members of the community who are here tonight and are viewing public, I am so pleased to announce that Stacy Tolbert has been promoted to the position of Assistant Town Manager and Planning Director here at the Town of Lewisville. Stacy graduated from Appalachian State University with a double major in community and regional planning and geography. She started doing planning work over 17 years ago, and she has held posi...
When she was two.
She has held positions in Lincoln County, in Rockingham County, and here in Forsyth County. Since coming to the Town of Lewisville in late 2018, Stacy here has led major initiatives ranging from the comprehensive plan to management of key grants and projects. In addition, she demonstrated her outstanding leadership skills when she served as interim Town Manager following the departure of the previous manager. Now, Stacy will continue to lead her department as Planning Director, and she will take on additional strategic priorities as Assistant Town Manager as we work together to deliver excellent services to our residents and complete major projects for the betterment of the greater Lewisville community. So, please join me in congratulating Stacy on this well-deserved promotion.
I just want to quickly take the time. I had emailed council members and thanked them for the opportunities that I have been given in this town. It's been a great experience. I want to continue that experience here, and I'm thankful for all the opportunities. It's been a pleasure working with James, the first two weeks that he's been here, as well as all the other staff that we have. I could not have done the role that I played over the summer without them in particular. Thank you for all of your support and our residents as well. I hope to continue to serve them. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Stacy. It's fabulous.
Thank you, James.
All righty. Mr. Manager, if you'll go over our items that we approved at our briefing?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Before we go off that. Recycling, it hadn't been picked up in my neighborhood as of this afternoon, so I'm just wondering if something happened.
Recycling or bulk?
Recycle, also.
Started raining.
It wasn't raining when I was walking, David.
Somewhere it was.
Oh, yeah, that's right. That's right. I walked, I went out walking about 3:30, 4 o'clock this afternoon, and I checked recycling bins as I'm walking just to see it wasn't just mine. There were others where it hadn't been picked up as well, and the bulky item's still out, but that's fairly typical.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I just didn't know if something had happened with that.
Yes, sir. We'll certainly check with our contractor on that particular one to see if there were particular sections that they were dealing with. And my understanding is we had separate groups that were handling the bulky item versus the recycling.
Right, right.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Bulkly item is often, often doesn't get picked up in the first week.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All righty. Briefing items, please.
Great. Thank you. This is a particular agenda item that's important. We want to make sure we share with community in the interest of transparency any items that might have taken place during the briefing session. And what we have to report are three items. First off, we have ordinance 2022-055. This was a budget amendment for four additional deputies and increased deputy hours for the Christmas parade. Number two, we had ordinance 2022-058. This was a budget amendment for installation of circuit panels on the new Duke Energy Pools, and these are the ones that will handle the Christmas decorations. And number three, resolution 2022-061. This is the interlocal agreement with Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities for the relocation of the Lewisville Lift Station, and this was part of the Great Wagon Road project. And that ends the report, sir.
Thank you. For the moment, we've all been waiting for, this is the second opportunity for public forum.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Before we move forward, can I see that we had an item on there for the community center facilities and programming? Do we have any updates at all on some of the tasks that Brian was going to be reporting back to us in November regarding volunteerism and the stats on the community center as far as usage and that type of thing?
I think he gave us our usage, but we do need to follow up on the volunteer.
So, the usage was part of your agenda packet for the agenda briefing. The volunteerism, he has been working with the Parks and Rec Board on that. They have, Stacy probably needs to speak on that a little bit better because she was at that meeting.
Thank you, Dora. Counsel, the Parks and Rec Board decided to... The Parks and Rec Board, um, decided to, uh, appoint a subcommittee specifically, there was three of their members, so they didn't violate any open meetings law, um, to further research volunteerism. Um, Brian Moore came to them at their last meeting and gave them some recommendations of some different programs that he had, had looked into, um, and so we hope they, um, aren't having a November meeting for lack of agenda items, and they're still working on that, that subcommittee is still working on that, so we're hoping in December that that subcommittee is able to come back to the Parks and Rec Board as a whole, um, to talk about their recommendations, so then that can be forwarded to council in the near future.
Okay, so just for clarification, um, probably some update in January, is that what we're thinking?
Yes, it would be, yeah, because their, their meeting would be after the regular meeting in December.
Thank you.
Anything else, council members? Very good, we're still in our public forum? Anybody wish to speak? Anybody in the front row? No? Very good, we'll, uh, move on. To those of you watching at home, if you wish to make written comments, you can submit those to townclerk@lewesvilleNC.net, townclerk@lewesvilleNC.net, and we'll be glad to review them as part of this meeting. Ready, council members, comments?
Yes. Uh, one of the things that I would like to see us do going forward is the new staff summary, uh, that, that came out this time. I'd like that to be more readily available for this meeting here, so that if people will do their homework and read what is emailed to our houses and so forth, then if we have that little summary here, that should be a cheat sheet enough to remind, to jog our memories and so forth, so that we don't get off in the weeds quite as bad and, and as, as we go forward. That's, that was something that was new this time, uh, it was, it's been new since briefing, if you will, and that I found is, I think is gonna be a very, very valuable tool going forward to cut down on some of the longevity of these meetings.
Madam Clerk, is that a, uh, something you can carry out?
Yes, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Either be able to produce it real quickly each time something like that comes up on the computer screen, or print just simply that one exec, or that one page off of the staff summary, if you will.
Yes, sir.
You know, and, uh, just if we have those right here, I think it will make everything go a whole lot better.
You know, the clerk and I talked about that today a little bit, actually, it was the manager and I had talked about it today, about the use of iPads for our briefing materials and our, and our agenda materials. We're not, I guess currently, we're not downloading that information to the iPads.
Well, it's in Dropbox and it's emailed to you, and you should be able to access both of those through your iPad, was my understanding. And it's on the website as well.
Yeah, I mean, the community, the, the, the council, we all have our own individual iPads that we use at meetings.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking about.
Yours.
Well, yeah, mine specifically.
Only, I have yours in the cabinet.
Okay.
Um, and I'll be glad to give it to you, that's just where Joyce said it was.
Sure.
So, um, and I gave Mr. Franklin...
Yeah, unfortunately, because now I don't know where it's at, and I send the house somewhere. Long as you had it when New World was there.
I'm unfamiliar where, um, about the others.
Okay, so, yeah, my agreement with, uh, Joyce and Hank was that, uh, and you probably are unaware of it, is that I would just have it at the time of the meeting.
Oh.
I don't wanna carry it around, 'cause it'll be in my house somewhere. Uh, so, I, I just wanted to have it available at meeting time, just so that I can reference it, and then I don't have to, you know, have paper or whatever.
I was not aware of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Council members, anybody else? I know you can also access this on your regular laptop.
Right.
Uh, does anybody wish to have an iPad brought out of mothballs for them?
I have one.
Okay.
The only counsel iPad that I personally have in my office is Dr. Sadler's.
Yep.
Soon, the rest of you have your own.
Hank, Hank took mine from me.
Okay.
Quite a time ago.
Okay.
The manager said, I'll take it.
Okay.
Council members, any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna put my speaker on. In the heart of Thanksgiving, I wrote this little ditty, well, it's not a ditty. Thank you, thank you to the citizens of Lewisville for allowing me to serve as your voice for you on Town Council. Thank you to town staff for your integrity and willingness to serve our town. Thank you to the Forsyth County Sheriff's Department for protecting and serving our town. Thank you to you, Mayor, and to Town Council for your dedication to our town. This month, we will all celebrate Thanksgiving in our own special way. I ask that we all take time to share with our loved ones, our neighbors, our friends, our family, what makes Thanksgiving in Lewisville so special. Open your hearts, open your minds, judge not, and be forgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman, and the same to you.
Oh, I'd like to, first of all, thank you, David, for who you are. All parts of you. But, but seriously, thank you for those, those words. Um, also wanted to say, I understand that the new community center is all decorated.
You should see it.
And they say it's phenomenal, and I think just finished yesterday, so, we would love for the citizens to come by, see it, have a cup of coffee, sit by the fireplace. Come see your new community center if you haven't been there.
Is, is there a planned open house for folks to come look?
You know, you provided the best segue for my comment, and the manager and I was talking, talking about this afternoon. Uh, he and the staff were saying, gee, wouldn't it be nice if residents could come in and see? You're right, Jamie, it's fabulous decorations, because they are pretty amazing. In fact, if you wanna drive home tonight and drive by them, you'd be able to see them through the windows. But yes, Mr. Franklin, that was the question that I was gonna ask, uh, council members tonight, if they wanted to try to do some type of holiday open house, and I believe the only date that was available...
Sixteenth.
Yeah.
I believe it was December sixteenth, Mr. Mayor?
December sixteenth.
That would be a Friday evening.
Friday evening.
I'd be glad to, you know, right now, I'd be there just to help, you know...
What about after briefing? Um, one of the things last week was, it's a little tight in that room. Um, trying to access, I appreciate staff's efforts in trying to access the nice TV and, but it is a little tight, not only for us as council members sitting around the table with our items spread out, but, um, maybe that would be an opportunity in December, we could have briefing there, and then maybe extend it to a hour open house or something, if that time's available, or do that Friday.
Be there at ten, ten-thirty at night, after briefing.
Well, that will encourage us to get out in like an hour. That's a good point.
I, I would like to think that we could be out in an hour, but you know better than that.
Let's maybe deal with a question, council members, are you all in support of doing something on December sixteenth for our residents?
Yeah.
Everybody's heads are on it.
Absolutely.
Great, staff, go forth and, and party. Ladies and gentlemen, so if you're watching at home, um, please watch your Lewisville Facebook page, also watch the Lewisville website, also pay attention to however else we might decide to promote this, but we will have an open house at our community center December sixteenth. It'll probably be in the early evening, so that you can see all the beautiful lights, and in the meantime, please drive by at night. Um, folks have done amazing job decorating this community center, it's, it's a real showplace. Alrighty, council members, any more comments this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Oops, hang on, we have another comment.
Quick, ARPA money, um, we have a retreat coming up, and I understand a lot of communities, municipalities, towns, cities, have processes by which they are making determinations on how to use those funds, and I know we've done some, some of that already, but I think going forward, I'll be looking to our manager as part of the retreat process or beyond, outside of that, because I suspect that's gonna be a big issue, I see Mr. Franklin is shaking his head, so...
Very good, thank you. Any other comments, council members? If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
A motion, we're here for another thirty minutes? No, Mr. Franklin makes the motion, is there a second, please?
Second.
Ms. Walsh makes the second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, we are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for watching at home, folks, the fries.